Ad Hoc Committee on Film and Television Production. I'm Paul Krikorian, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell and Corrin Price, who just got finished managing a long and heavy lift kind of hearing. And he's sticking with us and working hard. So it's good to have you with us, both gentlemen. And I want to thank all of you for joining us for this discussion today. First of all, this is the first meeting that the Ad Hoc Committee has had since the California Legislature passed the expansion of the film and television production tax incentive. So I want to thank all of you who are here for your role in making that happen. Congratulations to all of us on that. That was a huge step forward, needless to say, for this industry. And it also set the table, I think, for the work that we still need to do here locally. Because I'm convinced that this expansion of the incentive is going to pay this tremendous dividends that we all have known that it would. And as that business comes back, as those jobs come back to California, as production comes back here, we need to make sure that this city is well situated to take the best possible advantage of that. So congratulations to all of you. Now let's get busy on the next thing. It's always what we have to do. So we'll be taking public comment on any of the agenda items that we have on today's agenda. If you would like to offer public comment, please fill out one of these white cards. For those of you new to this, there's two ways to do it. You can speak about an agenda item, and we'll take those comments as we go through the agenda. You can also speak about any topic that's related to the jurisdiction of this committee, whether it's on the agenda or not. We will take those cards in general public comment at the conclusion of the hearing. I'd also like to note that -- Anna, raise your hand. Anna will be walking around -- Anna Arutunian, who's been staffing me and doing such a great job on this committee, will be walking around with a sign-in sheet. So if any of you have not previously signed in and you'd like to be included in our distribution list so we can keep you informed about future hearings and developments, by all means, go ahead and sign that list, and we'll be keeping you informed on that. So with that, members, if there's no other -- let's go straight to item number one.
Item number one is an Economic and Workforce Development Department report in response to motion Krikorian-Price relative to creation of a survey to be sent to those who received a filming permit from the city in the past two years to ask them to evaluate their experience working with the city, Film LA, and all city departments, and options to create a system to allow for continuing feedback on city film policies and services.
All right. Now, basically, the idea of this was if we want to find out how to make Los Angeles a better place to film, we should go and ask the people who film here what has worked well and what has not worked so well. So that's the essential concept behind this. So I want to welcome our report on this matter.
Eva Bittar with Economic Workforce Development Department. The filming survey is in response to the needs to collect and analyze data from the industry, from location managers. And what we are recommending is that we have a link in the Economic Workforce Development website, as well as a link to the Film LA website, and capturing data from the past two years by having Film LA ask all the permities to give us the responses of what has worked and what has not worked. In addition, we have, on an annual basis, we have had meetings with the location managers. And in the summertime, we meet with approximately 10 location managers, and they're given about 30 minutes to give us their feedback. And we compile that data. But it hasn't been a process, for instance, like we would get phone calls from the industry and from the public telling us what their needs are, and so would the council offices, and so would the mayor's office, and various offices that deal with filming, including Film LA. And this would allow us to capture all the data all in one place. And that way, we could report to you on an annual basis so that you can make recommendations and see what you'd like to do to improve filming in the city of Los Angeles. Attached is the survey. And if you approve of it, then this is what we would be able to add to the Economic Workforce website.
Very good. Members, any comments or questions on the survey?
So the survey is going to be administered online for those who log on? Are we sending it out?
So what it would be is Film LA would add it to their film permit so that they're able to know that they have a process to ask. It'll also be available to the general public so that they can let us know for the neighborhoods of what's going on in their neighborhood and who is having some issues with filming and so on. That way, rather than just a phone call, they can have an avenue. They don't have to give up their private information if they don't need to. It's private.
Mr. O'Farrell? Yes, sir. I just want to commend Paul Krikorian and Corrin Price for coming up with this idea. This is all about customer service. And this is putting city government in the business of providing customer service with Film LA, our partner. So I think through this vehicle, it will be a great way of collecting accurate data, if not feelings, on how people feel Los Angeles is in their ability to deliver that service for this important industry. So I just want to commend the two of you for taking this approach. And I look forward to seeing some of the feedback because it can only improve the way we approach policy for filming. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. And I do want to say, too, that even before all of this, EWDT and Ms. Bittar have been doing the kind of outreach that we're talking about, and actually going out and engaging the industry in listening and trying to develop recommendations based on that and get a sense of the satisfaction level. And that has been, I think, a very important dialogue to have. The survey will take us to the next level of that because it will allow actually data that will demonstrate change over time as well, in an objective way. So while people always have anecdotes, and the anecdotes are really helpful to identify specific problems that we can go address, overall satisfaction level and satisfaction level in each of these specific categories that can be measured over time, I think is going to be very instructive to us as policymakers as to where we should be focusing our attention, not just the squeaky wheel, but the broader consensus problems that will help to make filming easier here. So I think it's an important step forward, and thank you for the work that you've done in putting it together. We have one card on this matter, and that is Ellen Schwartz. So if you can come on forward. We can set it for two. We'll do two minutes. Clock says one, but we'll do two minutes.
I don't think I have two minutes. I'm from the L.A. Convention Center. I work for AEG. I'm the Vice President of Sales and Marketing there. And just wanted to kind of give you an update of how the Convention Center has been more active in the filming area in the last -- we took over really January 1st, and we've had 27 filmings since January through the end of September. I left there today. I had two filmings going on when I left and had to scout for another one today. We've been very flexible in working with the different location managers, and as a result, our business, you know, and the volume of business we're doing is increasing. I'm getting a lot of great comments from the people that we're working with on the responsiveness that since AEG has taken over, we're getting back to them more quickly. They're finding it more easily to do business with us. And all in all, just wanted to share that good news with you. We've also joined the Location Managers Guild and are trying to become more active and involved in the industry, hosting the Film Task Force and other meetings as well. So just wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you. It's great to hear. That's really important progress because the Convention Center was one of those places that for a long time was on or at or near the top of the list of difficult places for the industry, especially because of the limitations on craft services. So I'm really pleased that we're focusing attention on doing that.
Yeah, and that has changed. In fact, I had one of the location managers that came today for a scout. He said to me, he goes, "I don't think I've been here this many times. This is the fourth time I've been here in the last year. It's so easy to do business here." So happy to report that.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much. So members, without objection, we'll go ahead and approve, unless there's feeling otherwise, we'll go ahead and approve the recommendations of staff. And item number three, I'd like to propose that we amend to request that Film LA also provide the survey with all new permits that are submitted as well. So with that one change, that'll be the action of the committee. Thank you very much. And that brings us to item number two.
Item number two is reports from the city attorney, Los Angeles Board of Police Commissioners, Los Angeles Department of Transportation, Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Chief Legislative Analyst in response to motion Krikorian-Price-O'Farrell relative to eliminating impediments to filming in Los Angeles and improving efficiency and coordination of film permits.
All right. Thank you. Now, the objective of this motion was to really focus on some specific issues that each of our city departments that interact with the film industry frequently can -- specific steps that each department can take to try to alleviate some of the burdens that we frequently hear about from each of those departments. And so we'll be hearing from each of the departments separately on this issue, but why don't we hear first from our city attorney?
Yes, thank you. Kimberly Miera from the City Attorney's Office. We were asked to report back on ways to streamline filming at the city libraries. However, our report addresses filming at all departments. I believe the problems at the library were perhaps a little bit more pronounced. But in fact, in the past, all departments were asked to have production companies who had obtained a film permit to sign a separate location agreement. And after a meeting with Film LA, we worked collaboratively with them, and we have streamlined the process so that the location agreement is now consolidated with the permit application. And there are no longer two forms that production companies need to sign. In the past, they applied at Film LA, and then they went out to the department. Some departments were using it; most departments were not. So it was a little confusing for the production companies, and also a little burdensome. So we've just -- we actually just kept two or three clauses from the location agreement, which was several pages long in the past, and consolidated that with the permit application.
Terrific. Okay. Members, we're going to call each of the departments up individually, but before you leave, any questions for the city attorney, whether regarding libraries or the general consolidated permitting? Okay. Thank you very much. So why don't we hear next from the Department of Recreation and Parks? Mr. Regan, welcome.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Sorry for the little delay to get up here as we breach the ropes.
Not at all. Take your time. You don't want anybody rushing and tripping and, you know, creating city liability here.
We've been rushing all day. I'd also like to introduce our Superintendent of Griffith Park, Joe Solisus, who some of you may have met before. Joe is actually -- part of his duties in Griffith Park encompasses our Park Film Office, which is located right next to the ranger station. So councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity for us to report to you today. We just wanted to quickly go over the report that we did submit to the committee, essentially to give you some insight into what we do in Recreation and Parks, but also talk about some of the actions we've recently taken to try to increase our response to the film industry and expedite the permitting process and also provide better customer service. So just in general, the Department of Recreation and Parks Film Office usually gets involved in the process after a film permit has been at least initiated with Film LA. And then from that point, Recreation and Parks will work with the production company to identify a location that they're interested in and start that company through the permitting process. And this, though the Film Office is located in Griffith Park, we do this for all of the parks citywide where any company may want to film. The Department of Recreation and Parks processes approximately 2,000 film permits every year. And just as a side note, there's also another 1,500 applications that we process, which actually never result in a permit because the company drops off at some point in time and decides not to do it. So some of the issues that you may have heard, or at least the issues that we were hearing at the Department of Recreation and Parks from the filming industry and others who are in close contact with the film industry, is that there was quite a delay in Recan Parks issuing permits, that we weren't doing it quick enough, that we didn't have enough film monitors on staff to be able to properly get them out to the various filming locations and have those monitored. So that caused a delay. And just as a side note, so you understand, in case you don't, the film monitors are Recreation and Parks employees. They're actually -- their job classification is called Park Activity Monitor. And what we do is we actually staff every film shoot with a film monitor. We also staff things like the base camp being in the parking lots and things like that as well. And that's primarily to protect the park assets and make sure that the film companies stay in compliance with park rules, et cetera. So if we didn't have enough film monitors, we couldn't get them out. Thus, that caused a delay in the companies being able to do their work. So we did submit a request to manage hiring, to hire some additional film monitors. These film monitors, these park activity monitors are funded, but they're special-funded through the fees that we collect for filming. So we did have the money, but we didn't have the unfreeze authority. So we did go through the process. We have calculated that we need approximately 50 monitors, a pool of 50 monitors at all times. So these are part-time employees. So, you know, if we have 50 people, then we can kind of pick and choose, and then the employees can pick and choose, you know, some of them have other jobs, so they may have scheduling conflicts, et cetera. Well, just to let you know, kind of an anecdotal point, is that due to the hiring freeze and not being able to bring these folks on board, from the 50 people that we once had that we actually need to maintain at all times, we had gone all the way down to almost 20. However, we did get authority to hire an additional 30 to bring us back up to the total of 50. And since that time, we have already started hiring, and we have already hired 44 of the 50. So a total of, with the 20 we had plus the additionals, we're now at 44, and we're still on our way to 50. But we've been able to adequately cover the film shoots and make sure that we expedite the process. We also had a really great training session, not only for the new monitors, but for the existing monitors that are on staff. And we were stressing, you know, interaction with the film production companies, customer service, being polite, you know, being on time, all these types of things. And we had professionals from the film industry come in and help us with the training presentation. And we also had Eva Bittar from our city family help us, and she did a portion of the presentation, which was fantastic, and really gave a great, kind of a well-rounded, full-day-long training session to all these monitors. And now we've got them out in the field, and we'll continue to keep providing that service. So I think it's a big, that's a big piece of news and a huge improvement in our staffing level with Recan Parks and the film monitors. Next, it was, one of the other complaints was that there was no consistent --
Sorry, but before you move off the film monitors, great news that we're staffing them up. What will be the plan for oversight and accountability? Because I will tell you that, you know, some of the concerns that I've heard are individualized. You know, somebody, and the training session is very good news, but you still hear the story about the one person who, you know, said, "No, you've got to be out of here on the dot by, you know, the hour that you're designated to be out of here," or, you know, "The cops are going to come in," and all of those sorts of, you know, heavy-handed kind of things that result in exorbitant cost to a production. So what are we going to do to, now that we're bringing a lot more people in, and new people, how are we going to ensure oversight and ensure that they're staying on task and they're going to be tilting toward the side of customer friendliness and ensuring that we're keeping these jobs here?
Right. So that's a really a great question, and I'm happy to have at least a, I think, a pretty good answer or response in that. So in the past, we didn't have a direct supervisor of the film monitors. We had a number of people that worked in the film office, both part-time and full-time. The place was never, you know, always at its optimum staffing levels. There was always people, you know, kind of like, it's not like a bad thing like coming and going, but I just mean, you know, with the freeze and et cetera, and reduced budgets and the cuts Recan Parks has taken, so it was tough for us to keep all the staffing we needed. So we used to have to pull really kind of an administrative person out of the office to do the sort of the field supervision of these monitors. So in my opinion, in all honesty, I think that some of the complaints you may have been hearing stem from that inconsistency. Recently, within the last three to four months, we have actually hired a, it's a Recreation and Parks classification, you know, because it made sense to use that, but we've hired what's a supervisor in Recan Parks who's called Park Maintenance Supervisor. But we selected an individual who had really great, you know, attributes in terms of personality and customer service, and we're training him, not only so he's the direct line supervisor of all these part-time film monitors, but that he's also the interface for scouting and doing all the location management with the film companies. So he is directly responsible for supervising the monitors and making sure we follow up on every complaint that we may receive. And we've also taken a new approach in training our monitors. So we completely rewrote the Park Film Monitor Handbook, you know, so to speak. And we actually have a handbook that we call the Park Film Monitor Handbook. We completely rewrote it, and we rewrote it with an emphasis on customer service and being production-friendly. And we've been trying to get these folks to understand the monitors, to understand that the production companies go through a tremendous amount of stuff behind the scenes before they ever even arrive, you know, at the site. And so we have to try to make their job as easy as possible. We have to balance that, however, with making sure that we protect the park. And in all honesty, as you hear the horror stories about a monitor who maybe wasn't friendly or didn't provide good customer service or did something else wrong, we also hear the horror stories of the production companies who abuse their permit restrictions and try to blow things up they shouldn't, or break an irrigation system, or cut big limbs off of a tree, or, you know, back into a, you know, a park bench, or do all these other things that happen. And so we have to strike that balance. But councilmembers, I honestly want to let you know that Recreation and Parks is trying as hard as possible to make sure that we are professional and friendly. I'm going to be honest, it's tough. You hire a bunch of part-time folks, you know. It's not a super-high, kind of like skilled job. There's no, you know, college degree required. It just means some of them don't have that. But it's just that you try to get the best people you can. You try to put them out there and get them to understand the vision. If it doesn't happen, we will be monitoring that, and we will be, you know, taking appropriate corrective measures to make sure that we try to keep that, you know, going along properly.
Great. That's all good news. Sorry I took you off track.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you. So just in terms of the consistency with our permitting in the office, so one of the complaints was that, and this is true, we had two shifts in the office of part-time clericals, like administrative staff. So these were part-time clerk typists, and so they would come in the morning, and so if a production company had contacted that particular person in the morning and got like some of their process going, and then they called back in the afternoon after the shift change, sometimes the morning person hadn't talked to the afternoon person and given them all of the, you know, morning information. So they'd have to like start all over again in the afternoon with a new person. So what we started in the office was a kind of a rotation system that, you know, we just kind of innocently call it the buddy system, which means that it's as simple as this. The morning, the morning people have to talk to the afternoon people and brief them when they come on shift so that they know exactly what's going on, what's pending, what's in the hopper, what, you know, what companies have called for interest, and what processes have been started so that we don't have to restart them again. To dovetail into that, just so you know, a lot of our processes in the Park Film Office, while they are computerized, they're still like manual input, right? And a lot of it's done kind of by hand and then transferred in the computer. What we are doing in collaboration with councilmember Krikorian, with your office, with CAO, with CLA, DOT, the mayor's office, Economic Development, Eva, System, the cast of thousands, we're looking into this new computerized system that won't directly interface with Film LA, but it will be very much easier for Film LA to see what we're doing, for us to see what they're doing, and for all of us to talk to each other. And it takes away, it's going to take away all of the hand stuff that we're doing. So we're really looking forward towards automating, and we're hoping like within maybe the next six to nine months to have something in place there. And we're looking also for, you know, funding sources and having our Director of Systems figure out exactly what we need to do. So that's on the horizon, but that's a big thing we're excited about.
Did I cover everything?
Yeah, so just to add to Kevin's comments about our Film Office, I wanted to say that we were fortunate enough to fill another position that has a office manager now. So our senior park service attendant, Nicole Robotten, who is very popular in the film production companies, she's there on a regular basis now and not having to go out and do the duties of watching our monitors out in the field. So this has been able to help us improve our customer service in the office. And now we have our full-time park maintenance supervisor who's doing direct contact with our park activity monitors in the field and trying to change that old culture and be more, you know, really focus on, really focus strongly on customer service. We're doing customer service surveys now where we're calling some of the production companies to give us feedback on how did we do, you know? And actually pinpointing those problem, you know, sometimes people will call back and give us, "Well, you know, the gate didn't open 10 minutes, you know, earlier," or whatever it may be. So now we could focus on fixing those issues right there on the spot. So that's another, just another tool that we're using in our toolkit to try to improve the customer service in the field.
So councilmembers, that concludes our report. Thank you. So John Wiggan with the CLA. In your motion, you had asked our office to take a look at the Recan Parks report as well and follow up with any additional thoughts. One of our, it was great news to see that they had solved the immediate staffing issue in both the permit office and in the park monitors. That was an important first step. But it would be helpful going into the future to make sure that there's, that there are good workload and performance measures in place, so that, especially measures that take into account the service requirements to the film industry, the timeliness that's necessary to get back to requests for a permit. And with those measures in place, decision-makers in the department and you and the council and the mayor can better measure whether that service is being provided or not in a timely manner and effectively. We don't want to get in a position two years from now, five years from now, where the staffing has dropped down again and nobody knew about that. And if we have these measures in place, it's a tool for you to be able to monitor that. In addition, with the passage of the state tax credits, we know that we're going to get a lot more filming in the city. There's going to be a lot more demand on Department of Recreation and Parks, and they will need to be ready. And again, it's a question of measuring what their workload is, their performance, and being able to respond. The point is to try and find a way to be more flexible and get them the resources that they need to be responsive to the film industry. So we have some recommendations in our report suggesting that the CAO and the department work on these and get back to the council with some recommendations in that area.
And if I can put on my budget chair hat -- And if I can put on my, my Budget Chair hat now for a moment, I think it would be really helpful, as we go into budget discussions, to ensure that we have those sorts of metrics, as, as part of the department's budget as well, with the workload indicators, and, and some measure of, of performance as well. So, thanks for that recommendation.
Absolutely. There were a couple of other things, as, um, Kevin, Kevin, right? Yeah. Okay, as Kevin mentioned, about two-fifths of the permits that come through the department, or the request to look at parks as locations, are, are canceled. They never actually become a permit, uh, and so the department never actually collects a fee, associated with the work that they're doing. So, in effect, it's the city's contribution in time, and staff, and, and costs, to serve the film industry. It's not, um, a fee that we can really collect and, and capture back in, but it is part of the workload of the department. And so, that needs to be recognized in some way. It's, it's, we can't charge the permits that actually move forward, for that work, because it's not a fee-for-service, right? So, there's this balance between preliminary work, prior to the permit that's going forward, that we can't charge for, as well as the work that's, that is permit-related, that we can charge for. Um, so, there, there needs to be a recognition in their workload, um, on that factor. Uh, the department did ask for an adjustment in the fees, or recommend that they, that their fees be adjusted. There does need to be additional work by the C A O and Recan Parks, on determining what that fee rate should be. And so, again, our recommendation is that that, that work be done, and come back to you for consideration.
Great, and that, that would have to come to budget finance as well. So, I, I would rather make that assessment there, on the particulars of the, of the fees. Anything else on Recan Parks, members?
I just have one question.
Yeah, Mr. Price.
Park Activity Monitor, again, you mentioned they, they were just kind of a glorified gopher, or what, what role do they really play, uh, in terms of, once they're assigned to, to a project, or how does, how do they?
So, the, uh, the Park Activity Monitors, which we commonly refer to as like film monitors, so their, their assignment is to, it's actually a fairly complex assignment, and it takes, uh, quite a bit of on-the-job training to be able to do it correctly. So, they're, they're sent out, uh, to be onsite during the filming that take place in L A City Parks. They liaison with the, uh, production managers, and the, the site, you know, coordinators for the, the filming, um, production company. And they monit, they literally monitor the activities of the film shoot. So, during a film shoot, some shoots might be just really simple, and there's not a whole lot that's needed, and other shoots are more complex. It's not uncommon for production companies to build things, uh, in the park while they're shooting, to, uh, have explosions, to have, you know, contained fires, to have, uh, animals, you know, to drive heavy trucks back and forth, to do all kinds of stuff, uh, in the park. So, the Park Activity Monitor's job is to make sure that they go out, and they like mark out all the sprinkler heads, and the irrigation boxes. Sometimes a production company might roll in, and they didn't come in the right way, so their truck might get stuck near a tree, and so they might just get out, and like break the tree branch off. But instead, the Activity Monitor would be there to direct them away from the tree, and say, you know, you need to go over that path and come in this way. So, they're really like the onsite expert for Recan Parks, looking after the department's interest, and protecting the public ac, the public asset of that, um, city park, to make sure it doesn't get damaged. And if it does get damaged, because that sometimes happens, even with the best intentions, then that's all written up into the report by the monitor, and turned in, so that we can then build a production company for the repairs. So, they have a very significant job. Recreation and Parks policy, including commission policy, does not allow us to have film, uh, significant film productions in the park without a monitor onsite.
Thank you.
Thanks for this report. As, as our colleague Tom Labange always reminds us, Sam Goldwyn famously said, "A tree is a tree, and a rock is a rock. Shoot it in Griffith Park." So, I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that we're making it easier to shoot it in Griffith Park. So, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you, council members.
Let's go ahead and, and go next to D O T. You have Transportation here?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins, welcome.
Salwen Hollins, Department of Transportation. Okay. Um, the Los Angeles Department of Transportation was asked to report back on our signposting services in particular, which are temporary sign, parking restriction signs. And there were concerns about the inconsistent or untimely manner of the posting of the signs. And so, on July 30th, we wrote a report, addressing what we thought we would need to improve that. Since July 30th, however, the C A O, um, and the, with the help of the C A O, we were able to fill a lot of our vacant positions throughout our department. And we, in turn, assigned staff to this, this function. We have nine maintenance labors who go around the city, posting all of the temporary signs, for filming, for special events, for other types of services. Um, we still have some staffing issues. Two of the maintenance labor, there's nine maintenance labors, two of them actually have been on long-term leave, um, for medical reasons. So, due to that, we've had to compensate with overtime. And that's how we've been able to keep pace with, with the demand. The, oh, the crews typically work, start their shift at 5:00 in the morning, um, work till about 2:00 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. When we do the overtime, they actually come in earlier. They come in at 1:00 A M., typically, to work, because it enables us to beat traffic. And that enables us to be more efficient in posting signs, and getting them up, and removals as well, and getting across the city. Um, in addition to that, um, since our July report, we feel we've, we've made great progress in being a little bit more consistent. The challenge still comes with what we term as add-ons. And add-ons are times when there's last-minute changes, or needs for changes in parking restrictions. And that's, continues to be a challenge, but we've already reached out to Film L A, and intend to continue to work with the industry on, maybe some solutions on that end, to improve our services in that area. And that's...
So, with the addition of the extra crew, um, you could cover seven-day-a-week, uh, sign placement and removal, um, which would be terrific. Um, and that, looks like that has almost a half-million-dollar price tag to, to do that.
Right. If we were to pursue that, and provide the full range of services, that would enable us to have an additional crew that could work, sort of a swing shift in the weekend, so that someone's always around for any potential changes, last-minute requests, et cetera. We would also need to invest in, um, um, you know, trucks, so they can get around, because the shoot, the crews would kind of overlap with some of the existing crews on Monday through Friday schedules. But that would obviously give us the opportunity to really provide service, almost on call.
Well, that would be a help, because that kind of flexibility is what's critical to this industry. And I, you started your comments by describing inconsistency, and I think that was a good word to use, because on the whole, for the most part, I've heard the department get very high marks on sign placement. But when it doesn't work, it's a big deal. You know, so those few times when it, it doesn't work, uh, well, or they're not on time, or, you know, that somebody's not available, it's a, it's a huge ordeal for the production. So, um, generally, high marks, but having this kind of additional flexibility would, I think, allow the department to provide, even much better service. So, um, uh, be happy to take that up in budget finance, uh, as well. Any, I'm sorry, did you have anything else to add to your report?
No, that's...
Members, anything for D O T? Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hollins, for, for your work in this. We've been meeting for the better part of a year off and on with my staff. And Department of Transportation, I think, next to Recreation and Parks. To me, Department of Transportation looms larger than just about any other city department in relation to filming, location filming across the city of Los Angeles. I'm, I'm more interested, or not, I'm not more interested, that's, that's inaccurate, but I want to focus on impediments to filming, and also what I see as an inflexibility on the, the signs, and what are on the signs in terms of the allowable period, or the window, if you will, where filming is allowed for a particular shoot. And we've all seen these signs, right? The problem for years, I mean, I've been at this for 12 years, is the fact that the sign shop seems to have limited signs, in terms of the hours that are posted. Here's an example. Here's a sign, and, and let me just back up a second. Almost nothing impacts residents where filming is occurring, uh, as traffic and limited parking impacts to filming. And in my view, if we had more flexibility in the, in the signs that were posted, it would relieve, uh, a lot of the pressures in our neighborhoods. So, for an example, no parking 11 to 6, this is for a shoot, and it's, uh, Sunday through Tuesday. It is not uncommon at all, and you know this, we've discussed it many times, that perhaps, um, that this film shoot would wrap up. It would be, it might be a one-hour film shoot from 11 to midnight. But since this, there are only signs that say 11 to 6, that's the sign that gets posted. And it might, and the shoot is permitted Sunday through Tuesday, it might wrap the following day. But all the residents on these affected streets won't park their car all night long, and they won't park it on Tuesday as well, even though the filming production might already have left. I think this simple, little issue is actually a huge issue, and I, I think that we need to have a greater emphasis on, uh, the inventory of signs, and the, the hour, hours of operational restrictions. Uh, that is, has always been a problem. Here's one that says, "No parking 6 P M. to 6 A M., Sunday through Tuesday." And this is an example of a shoot that, uh, I've seen this more times than I can even put a number to, where there's actually a film shoot that, that, uh, needs the street from 6 P M. to 10 P M. only, only, and then they're done for the night. But yet, because you only have a sign that says 6 P M. to 6 A M., that's the sign that gets posted. And so, an entire street of residential neighborhood is impacted, and won't, you know, they're, uh, you know, living with some significant inconvenience. So, I urge, plead, beg, D O T. to take a look at this issue. Um, I've been dealing with it since 2002. And these are plasticized cardboard signs that can't cost too much, um, because, um, you know, I've posted the no, no dumping signs, uh, that are made of the same material. Within that, having said all that, I think there needs to be greater flexibility beyond D O T., in terms of, um, perhaps empowering Film L A., or an authorized, uh, crew member to post and remove signs. I think we should explore that, given the budgetary restrictions we're still living with. And I know there are concerns with that, uh, that are legitimate, but I think it should be explored. And I know there's something pending, a report in committee, in D O T. Committee, that, uh, more or less explores that possibility, not just for filming, but for all types of, uh, street closures that, uh, aren't filming. So, if, if you could speak to that, that would be terrific.
Okay, I'll start with the last item, which was the posting and removal of signs. Under the current municipal code, only the Department of Transportation has the authority to do that. And so, we've been working with the city attorney's office on possible language that is, um, pending T. Committee. I believe it's scheduled for November, mid-November T. Committee, on that very issue.
Is it calendar, to your knowledge?
It's not calendar yet, but I think that's the target that the city attorney is, is aiming for. On the issue of the, the customization of signs, um, we are, actually are open to that. Um, right now, we have about 35 standard signs that, um, requesters choose from, that, um, we have more than that, that are standardized, but they are very specific. Um, the challenge has been, we have one machine to produce, you know, hundreds of thousands of signs every year, and it, we, we're trying to absorb it in our current budget, to procure a new machine. So, we can at least have two machines, because the sheer volume of adding custom times, it's just going to increase it even more. And so, we have to not only have that, but also our labeling, and our raw supplies, in order to produce that. So, that's what we've been working on behind the scenes. We have reached out to Film L A., um, so we can start setting up discussions on this possibility. Our intent was, before, you know, probably, within the next month or so, to maybe have some mockups of what it could look like, and share that at an upcoming, um, the, the Film Task Force meeting, and just show them potentially what it would look like. But it is a matter of equipment. It's not so much, at this point, an unwillingness to do it, it's the equipment.
And Salwen, how much is one of those signs?
The sign...
Not those signs, I mean, the machines that print the signs, I'm sorry.
The machine, the ones we use, I think it's, pushes close to $40,000.
Forty thousand dollars.
It's a very delicate piece of equipment, um, but it's high-volume. You know, when you think of it, year after year, um, and it's not just posting signs, reposting, and it, it's just a lot of wear and tear on that equipment. So...
John Wickham, C L A.'s office. This is an area that is of particular concern. We were trying to address that as well. Um, part of the fee structure that was set up for this service a number of years ago, did not incorporate the concept of custom signs. And so, our, one of our recommendations is that we look at the fees, you know, if it's an extra 50 cents per sign, or 50 cents for the, you know, it, it's worth it to go that extra step, to provide customized signs to the clients, and give them exactly what they want, and help out the community. So, that, that's one way to address that. There will be extra time required to print out the new signs, and put that together. One of our concerns, though, is the accuracy of the data that goes on the custom sign. I want to make sure that we have a way to communicate between the Film L A. permit system and D O T., so that D O T. is not replicating, or re-entering the data, and an error gets put in, and now the sign is wrong. That's, that's going in the wrong direction. Uh, it needs to be set up in a way that this is, um, consistent, that it's accurate, and we're able to provide exactly what they need. Uh, it seems that if custom signs are available to the film industry, that should go a long way to addressing the problem. The other, um, issue relates, similar to what we did, what we talked about with Recreation and Parks, that there needs to be more flexibility and resilience in their response to the staffing problems that creep in, that they dropped so significantly low in the number of, uh, staff. Putting the signs out created some of the problems that we had, and nobody was able to monitor that, and find a solution in an effective time manner. So, again, if we have workload and performance measures, that in particular take into account time factors, um, we can again, measure and monitor what's happening in the, in this unit, and respond more quickly to get the staffing there as needed. It's a fee-for-service unit, so we, we shouldn't have to need to have Film L A. post the signs for us, or anybody else to post the signs for us. We should be able to post the signs, and we should be able to get them up. And we do it well, um, when we have the staffing, and we have the money. So, let's try and fix internally what's, what we're doing in our operations, so that we can meet that service the way that we know we can.
Thank you, thank you. I was just, I think in light of the passage of A B. 1839, it isn't coming upon us to fine-tune our own city processes. Even though this, you know, it seems, like I, like I mentioned, it, it seems like, uh, a, a small, uh, sort of component of the overall issue. The implications in our neighborhoods are just enormous. So, I really appreciate your work on this.
One, one of the things that, that production, uh, location managers do on occasion, is, when they leave, they drop the signs. They turn them, and they drop them. So, that's one option that is available, I believe, to the location managers when they leave, to help in the neighborhoods. So that, if, if they leave at midnight, but it says no parking until 6:00, they've gone, they've dropped the signs, and people can start parking again. Um, that's, that has been one, one solution.
And that should be encouraged. Thank you.
That's helpful. It doesn't completely solve the problem, and I, I appreciate that you've raised it, Mr. O'Farrell, because people plan ahead. And if they see the sign says, "No parking until 6:00 A M.", you know, they're not, they're not going to go out, move their car in the middle of the night, even if the sign is down. So, um, I think the more we can do to try to reduce that impact, the more receptive neighborhoods are going to be to having location shoots in the neighborhood. And so, it's, it's good for everybody, to be sure. Mr. Price?
I agree. I think, you know, we have an internal customer and an external customer. We have to really satisfy both, uh, our, you know, citizens, and then... We have to really satisfy both of our citizens and then certainly the film companies who want to do business with us.
In addition, the department identified $160,000 worth of equipment, software, and computer equipment, et cetera, that would be helpful in their ability to provide the services. And so, our report recommends that the CAO and the department work to identify source of funds to identify, to buy that equipment and put that to use.
Terrific. Very good. Thank you very much for your report and for your good work on this. That brings us then to the Los Angeles Police Department.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Captain Phil Fontanetta, LAPD, commanding officer, emergency operations. The film unit falls under my command. I've been asked to speak specifically on the status and availability of film unit vehicles. And before I answer that, I'd like to thank the committee and Film LA, as well as the location managers, for the many commendable remarks that we receive, the service provided by the film unit. However, it's interesting that I noted that the location managers received some type of word, either from the film unit or some other sources, over a year ago, that there was a lack of vehicles for the film unit for their response to off-site locations. We did have a situation where, based on the age of the fleet, some vehicles were salvaged, but that was immediately remedied by putting in replacement vehicles. So I hate to make this as simple as possible, but it appears that there was a communication either on a street corner or in a hallway, that there was vehicles that were going to be taken away due to salvage, but yet there wasn't a follow-up that, well, by the way, you will have your service uninterrupted. And that ends my report. We have those vehicles, they've been in place, and service has not been disrupted.
Okay. Members? Yeah, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, and Captain, thank you. I, I wouldn't, I would like to suggest that LAPD and, in concert with Film LA, have an emphasis on encouraging, and we've talked about this with Film LA certainly over the years, and I think they do this more and more, but encouraging productions to explore other parts of the city in which to film a particular scene or segment or a portion of what they're going, their production. And also, and this is really important, there are sensitive areas to the city where perhaps simulated gunfire is used in a filming. I think that production companies can learn a lot from your expertise and LAPD in terms of sensitive areas in which to do that. And I would just encourage an emphasis on that, on an approach for permits that are applied for. I think that we need to take advantage of our geography, 503 square miles, the city of LA, and not have an oversaturation of filming in one particular neighborhood. And that would go a long way in terms of neighborhoods being more flexible in their approach to filming and being impacted.
Captain, have you seen change over time in the last number of years in the calls that you're getting for interference or extortion?
Looking at, funny you should ask that, just so happened to have some numbers for you. On 2010, we were looking at calls for service total of 69, three of which were interference. For 2011, calls for service were total 83, seven of those were for interference. For 2012, we had 152 calls for service, 13 interference-related. 2013, 197 calls for service and 16 interference. So far, and I can only go from January to June of 2014, we had 108 calls for service with four of them being for interference. And so, when we look at that spike for 2013 with the 16, I would have to say that had to deal with more of an education component and the ability for the film unit to meet with these location managers and explain that we want to hear from them. We've talked about this before. We never want to discourage that reporting. We want to be able to hear about it, we want it to be able to address it, and then conduct our activities accordingly.
Great. Members, anything else?
Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it.
Okay, and then I think that brings us finally to DWP. Who hears from DWP? And actually, if I can invite Rajiv Dalal to come up as well, I think you wanted to speak to DWP issues as well. I'll come to you briefly, but actually, before we do, let me just, as long as you're here, Mr. Dalal, let me just thank the mayor's office, you, and the mayor's team for the steps that we're taking in each of these departments, because I think it really is a concerted, coordinated effort to try to take tangible steps that I know you're very committed to and the mayor is very committed to. And so, I just want to applaud you and your team for the work that we're doing in each of these areas. And with that, you had, I don't know if you would like the department to speak first?
Yes.
So, Fireaway, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Sandra Wallace, Department of Water and Park. So you had asked us to address the reevaluation of sites that have been determined to be off-limits because of homeland security issues or out of use. We have gone ahead and done that. Presently, we've reopened the Hollywood Reservoir to filming activities, and we take each case that comes up, each filming manager or location scout that calls us, and evaluate the area that they want. If it's a power facility, I defer to the power manager, and if it's a water facility, I defer to the water manager, based on the security concerns that we might have. Again, each one is case-by-case basis, so if it does propose possibly be a hazard or something that could be electrical or unable to have the filming in that location, we can't allow that. But however, if they do request something, we do it in our best interest, or we will suggest an alternative location that might help suit them.
So, before you move off to the homeland security issue, I think everybody understands that there are real concerns that we have regarding the security of our water and power supplies. But that being said, I appreciate you taking a fresh look, because some of these things, Hollywood Reservoir being a good example, great opportunity for us to rethink whether or not we really need to have that kind of a restriction, or whether a great location can be reopened to the industry. Another one that has come up frequently in discussions with my office is our facilities that might be utilized as base camps or for parking. And the John Ferraro Building's parking lot, being located in such a choice location as it is, is frequently mentioned as a place that would be very, very helpful to be able to use for parking. And that doesn't seem like it would be as sensitive a location for homeland security issues as, say, a reservoir or a power line right-of-way might be. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. Actually, we do use the JFB parking lot for base camps and for crew parking, primarily when the film companies have requested to film at the JFB building, and primarily doing off-hours. So right now, those parking lots are used for employees. So if a film company wants to work and shoot on the weekends, we'll accommodate their, their crew parking and base camp at either the lot that's adjacent to Hope Street and make that, those parking spaces available to them.
Okay, so this was not, this was never a homeland security issue, this is a capacity issue in whether you can accommodate your employees in the lot?
Correct.
Okay. So then it's safe to say that when that issue is not there on off-hours and so on, that it's made readily available?
Yes, and we also make some of the parking spots available should they want to film, if they want to put a Dolly camera in the parking lot to shoot something that's up on the moat, we'll accommodate the film companies by blocking off certain amount of spaces for them to be able to do that.
Okay. Now, a number of years ago, probably four years ago, I think, Mr. Alarcon introduced a motion that included recommendations to provide power nodes throughout the city and also to make, if I'm recalling correctly, to make rights-of-way, the transmission rights-of-way more available for parking and base camp as well. So how have we done, how have we progressed since then in those two holes?
Well, as far as parking on the transmission right-of-ways, we do again accommodate those. I can't recall this past year where they're, us denying somebody parking on those right-of-ways, unless the property is leased out to somebody else, then we're unable to do that. As far as power nodes, I'll have Wayne Hinkston from Power address that.
Yeah, Wayne Hinkston. I'm the manager of distribution engineering. A few years ago, about four years ago, we installed four nodes throughout the city, one at Griffith Park, two here at City Hall, and then one at the JFB. And these were test cases. We wanted to see how much they would be used. We consulted Film LA. We chose these locations because they were high-use, high-use facilities. We installed the nodes, and to date, we didn't get, we don't get the kind of penetration we thought we would. The film industry, for some reason, don't utilize the nodes as we thought they would. Recently, we came up with an alternate solution to incorporate the film nodes with EV chargers at popular parking areas. And we are trying to get some feedback from the industry, some support from the industry to move forward with that idea. So this would be an alternate means of accomplishing the same thing.
Okay. This might be a fruitful area, Ms. Batar, for some direct feedback on, you know, why that is. I can imagine some of it is just forced a habit of bringing the generator out, some of it might be the distance that you have to run cable, might be a lot of practical reasons like that that we'll want to get to the bottom of. But you're coming to the mic, so it looks like you already have.
Some of the location managers have stated that they, at first, they were reluctant to use them because they weren't sure how powerful they were. And then in the last citywide task force meeting, the department came and talked about the power, and I think they should be a little bit more comfortable to utilize them now.
Terrific. Very good. All right. Members, anything for DWP?
One item, Mr. Chair.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. I'm particularly interested in item three, in terms of power rates on industry businesses. I know that these rates were set a number of years ago now, I think before any of us were on this body. And unfortunately, those billing tiers were set at the highest power usage times in all of our studios. As production ramps up again, and we feel that that is the case with the passage of 1839, and given that we have studios across the district, across the city, in my district alone, we've got Paramount in Hollywood, Siren, Fox Studios, Encompass Media in Glassell Park, Sunset Bronson. Is anything being considered in terms of, of the, you know, they took a 30% increase in power usage. How would you all address that, you know, some years later?
And actually, if I can just dovetail on that.
Sure.
It's a really important point. This industry, the studios in particular, have done, I think, a magnificent job of trying to create sustainability and reduce their usage of power and water and so on. They're using more advanced technologies to try to produce the power demand. But that being said, this is a very power-intensive industry. They need a lot of electricity, obviously. So in addressing Mr. O'Farrell's question, we, I just want to throw out there, and I hadn't thought of this until you raised the issue, but maybe there, in addition, in the same way that we provide consumer incentives for efficiencies in appliances and so on, I wonder if there might be some targeted incentives that we can create to help offset some of the costs that the studios are investing into efficiency, which would serve the interests of the ratepayers, as well as the interests of keeping costs down at our local studios.
I think that's an excellent idea. We can take that back to the rates manager and probably report on that at the next meeting.
But I didn't mean to detract from Mr. O'Farrell's question.
No, I think, I think your addendum is perfect, and I think your points are great. So we would love to hear a report back on what that could look like.
Members, Sandy failed to mention that they've actually added some staff to the security office to help with the processing of their permit requests, so it's, the department is taking additional effort to make sure that they're responsive in a timely manner to the film industry. That was one of the things that they have done to improve their service.
Great, that's great. And I think an important takeaway that all of the people who are here behind you should hear is that, as I understand what you just said, there isn't going to be a blanket prohibition based on homeland security issues on particular locations. Each one will be considered as a separate request, and the potential risks weighed, and we'll do our best to try to accommodate the needs of the industry while still protecting the critical homeland security needs that, you know, we won't be able to get around.
If I can add to that, Inspector Harrisick, Director of Water Operations with the department. When we use the term homeland security, maybe we're using that kind of as a surrogate as well for just operational needs that have a security component to them, or really a safety component to them. So the first thing that always shoots to my mind is where we have chlorine stored and used. And so, those types of chemicals are regulated by homeland security, but they're also regulated by Department of Drinking Water in the state of California. So they have a full expectation that those type of facilities, the pumping station, tanks, chlorination stations, they're, are being used for their intended use, and that's for water delivery, as well as we've got obviously ongoing staff going in and out of those. And, you know, we need to pump water and we can't have a crew around there. So as it turns out, primarily the request we're getting on the water side is mostly for the parking and to handle the staff. And by and large, on these case-by-case bases, just looking back since the spring, we've had about 11 requests, and we've granted seven of them, and only a couple of them have been denied just because of operational use. They want to go on a pumping station or on top of a tank or something like that. So...
All right, very good. Mr. Dalal, did you want to?
I think you guys actually answered, so. Answered, asked and answered, so I'm okay.
Okay, all right. So when, I think what I would like to see happen, consistent with what we've been talking about today with our survey and so on, is when there are denials of those requests, is there some way that any of the folks here might recommend that we could, that we can hear about what's being denied? Because I think it's important, seven out of 11 is great, but if those four remaining ones are the ones that are consistently denied, that's something that I think I would like to know, that our film liaison would like to know. We'd like to be able to know if there's an issue there that we can figure out a solution for. But we won't know that unless we see a pattern developing, and we'll only know that if there's some sort of reporting done on this. So I'd just throw that idea out there. If anybody has any ideas off the top of your head for how we might be able to do that, collect that, would that be something that would come through your office?
Well, we can go ahead and put together a report of sorts. Like the other departments, many of the location managers and filming crews that do call and want to use a location do often cancel. Even if we did approve them for that, they may find another location or another facility. And we could put together a report and send it through. And we could put together a report and send it through your office or the film's office or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not looking here to add additional report obligations. I just think there should be something systematized so that when there are those things, it's, not to put you through, you know, producing a 10-page report about the history of the last five years on this, but just something that's systematized. So when there's a denial, the film liaison knows about it so that we can compile that data eventually. That, I'm just thinking off the top of my head here, but it's not something we have to resolve today, but maybe if the minds who, the good minds here can all come together on that, we can come up with some sort of system so that, so that the policymakers get a sense of what it is that you're doing on those denials. Because, you know, it is something that we hear a lot. We hear a lot from the industry that there's this sort of consistent pattern. We've heard from you that there isn't a blanket prohibition. So if there's not a blanket prohibition and there's a case-by-case evaluation, if there's a consistent result on some of those cases that's uniform, then we should know that to see if there's some way we can reevaluate whether that's really necessary. That's my objective on this. Yes, Mr. Wickham, did you want to?
No, there's one more thing after the DWP that I need to report on.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your being here. Thanks for your good work. Thank you, Mr. Dolev. All right. Mr. Wickham.
So the last item, you had requested information about the information systems and making sure that Film LA and the departments were sharing data. And your city departments have gotten together, Wreckin' Parks, DOT, Fire, CLA, CAO, Economic Development, and ITA, your staff, to talk about our options here, what we're trying to accomplish. The concern is that there are some data systems that are not talking. Film LA is putting in information, and then Wreckin' Parks will re-enter that information in their own proprietary system, for example. And that's just an opportunity that leads to error and a waste of time. So the departments have gotten together in an informal working group to try and help see what resources are available, look at the systems that have already been developed, and find a way to move forward. So, for example, the Department of Transportation has a system called Teams. They gave a demonstration to all the other departments to show how they're using Teams to identify where signs will be posted, how those signs will be distributed, and then how they'll be taken back down in the future. So there's been a significant amount of work. It's really an exceptional system that they've created. And it could serve as a model for Wreckin' Parks or Fire, for example. So after that meeting, we also looked at the Film LA permit system. There are a couple of other systems that we're looking at. So right now, Wreckin' Parks and Fire are developing, describing their work rules so that that can be translated into a web interface that can then be developed and then talk to Film LA. So again, we're not, we're getting away from inputting data multiple times. We're instead doing it just once, it'll be accurate, and it'll address, for example, what I mentioned earlier about custom signs for film, you know, no parking. We'll have that input just once, and there won't be an error theoretically down the line. We're trying to accomplish this within the work program and the budget that the departments have. We talked to ITA, and it seems like it would take two or three years to identify the funding and then initiate a broad citywide project. So we thought it might be much more effective and efficient if the departments used their own in-house staff and their own in-house contracting resources in order to accomplish these revisions. And it looks like that will allow us to roll out much more quickly. So that's a status report from the departments and the CLA. We will come back to you in 60 days with a follow-up, and we'll make sure that we move this forward.
Okay. Very good. Anything else, members? Okay. So without objection will be the action of the committee to receive and file the departmental reports and to approve the recommendation, the policy recommendations of the CLA. So thank you very much. That brings us to item number three. Oh, I'm sorry, no, I had a card. And in fact, if anybody else would like to provide comment, please fill out one of these cards and bring it forward. So, sorry, members, I got to reopen item number two. We have a card from Josh Siegel.
Thank you. I'm Josh Siegel. I'm a line producer and production manager. I was at your first meeting back in February, and I spoke about the importance of not giving independent film the short shrift as you went about getting the legislation passed and the other matters that you're talking about today. I commend the passage of the legislation. I congratulate you on doing that, but I do feel there are some fundamental flaws as regards independent film with the legislation. I realize we're not talking about that today. I didn't realize there was a specific agenda for today.
It's okay.
I apologize. The email I got didn't mention that. So I'll try and recater my thoughts towards that because going forward with the things that you're doing regarding services and the other matters, I think it's really important that independent film can benefit from it. Like I said, I'm a line producer, and a lot of what I do for my job is solving problems. I'm not here to complain at all. And in fact, what I said the first time I was here was that I have many solutions for you from my 15 years of experience in the independent, low-budget film world that I think can benefit. And I apologize that when I'm recatering my comments now, I have to kind of put you on the spot a little because I don't know how else to say it. But when I was here, I had asked, how can I communicate this to you? How can I do it? You said, well, email me. Here's my email address. And I went back and emailed you right away, and I right away got an email back saying, thank you for your email. We can't respond to all your emails. We'll take your, you know, issues in mind. I spoke with your office, and they said they put the email in front of you, but that was in February, and I haven't heard from you. I don't know how else to ask. I know I'm small potatoes, I, you know, and I know you're very busy, but I feel that I have a lot to offer you, as I know you genuinely pursue these matters. So if there's any way that I can be of help, I'd love to.
I'll make it real easy. I don't feel on the spot at all. And you're right that the progress that we've made in Sacramento doesn't necessarily address the needs of independent and smaller productions. I think what we're doing here locally with these sorts of removals of barriers is especially impactful for smaller productions, and that's why this is important. And in terms of your specific recommendations and suggestions, I'm going to ask Anna to come over and talk with you right now, and I'd love to sit down with you in our office, and we can take those. By the way, you're my neighbor as well, so I may see you when you're walking your dog.
Yes, I know. Yeah.
All right. So thanks, thank you very much for coming out. All right. With that, members, then, I'll assume that there's no objection to doing what we previously did, so we'll move forward with that. That brings up item number three.
Item number three is motion, O'Farrell Fuentes, relative to an instruction to various departments to report with comprehensive lists of city-owned properties, buildings, facilities, parking lots, and structures that can be used for location filming, production filming, I'm sorry, production facility use, production shoots or base camps, and an instruction to the city administrative officer, information technology agency, and any other appropriate departments to work with Film LA to notify and/or inform production companies of city-owned locations available for filming via the city and Film LA websites and any other applicable ways, and to encourage further filming in the city.
Mr. O'Farrell, do you want to set this up at all? Or do you want to just bring Film LA up?
Let's, as they make their way up, I can set up very, very briefly. And that, who do we have? Okay, so Donna Washington will be coming, representing for Film LA, I believe. Sorry to put you on the spot, Donna. Just the, okay, and Art Eunice here as well. So the goal of this is?
Come on up, Art.
The city owns considerable property across the landscape, and we have been requesting an inventory from our city departments on where these properties are, just an inventory. So we have a list that we can work in concert with Film LA in administering permits that might lead to providing a facility for base camps for location filming, for example, or other uses that could be an accessory for on-location filming. And we know that there's often conflict in terms of city parking lots that are used near merchant areas, and nonetheless, we have, it's not just City Hall. We film here all the time, and we can accommodate it, but we have other properties spread across the city. We are the one, one of the largest landholders in the city. So we are requesting an inventory for all these properties so that we can work as a partner for location production shoots in Los Angeles.
So maybe we can start by, if you can describe Loco Scout a little bit, how you identify city facilities that should be included, whether you've had interaction with some of the departments that are identified in the motion to try to develop that list more. And I think this has been a long frustration that even members of the council have a hard time getting departments sometimes to identify what the city owns in a given area. And it's maddening that this isn't available, you know, with five keystrokes. But Loco Scout is a step towards doing that. How can we make sure that everything that we have is made transparent and available? So.
Actually, what you're doing currently is actually excellent. We, by giving the directive to the city departments to start working with us about identifying the properties they own, recently, I attended a task force meeting where there was a list handed out to us that Eva, I believe Eva, Eva had worked with General Services and the other?
Was it housing?
Housing.
Yes.
And these are a list, perfect. This is a list of properties, this is a list of properties that actually have been vacant for quite some time, that we are currently working with Eva on identifying usability. People in my production planning department are working with her on walkthroughs to see if it really is usable for the industry, you know. A lot of these properties have been boarded up and haven't been used for years and are not necessarily usable. So we're going through that list right now. We are currently also working with General Services, with Eric Robles and his team, when we find out about properties, old CRA properties that have, are coming online. So it's slow, but it's working, you know, bit by bit, it's coming online. So all we can do currently is still work with the departments and ask them to identify properties as they become aware of them. And as soon as we know that they are usable, we are sending out a person to go take photographs and put them on Loco Scout, identify the price structure, you know, all the specs about the property itself, and obviously, they're free, so.
Well, they hopefully will be after we approve item number four on today's agenda.
There you go. There's your message.
But currently, I think that Eva probably has the most.
Eva, do you have the most current list?
Yes.
Anything to add, Ms. Batar?
Just the listing that you have right now, and we are expecting more to come from the CRA. Our assistant general manager informed me that we have a few more properties. So I do collect those properties, and we take the location managers on a tour. We have four dates set up for December to take the location managers to look at these properties and see which of them are of interest, and then Film LA comes along on the tour, and they take pictures of them and post them on Loco Scout.
Okay. Very good. So, Mr. O'Farrell, anything further on this?
Just, we keep this open, and as the reports come in, we know what we're looking at as far as our inventory, and then, you know, we might be in business soon.
That's been going very well. I mean, the off-street parking lots alone have been a great help.
Yeah, and I really, I really want to commend Housing for coming up with a list in fairly short order, so we look forward to hearing from all the other departments.
Great.
Mr. Price? All right, we have one card on this matter, and that's Gene Peterson. Mr. Peterson, if you can come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Gene Peterson. I'm from the Motion Picture Officers Association. And the reason I'm here is that I understand that what we're here for is try to bring filming back to LA, the incentive programs that we have and everything else. A lot of times, we don't realize that the LAPD retired and active guys that are working the sets actually are a very big incentive to bringing filming here to LA. If you talk to any of the guys that work the sets, you'll listen to them talk about being outside of the city, coming back and saying, thank God we're back in the city. We're safe. We know we have somebody that's going to be working with us that knows how to do this stuff. I'm here as a representative of the MPWA to try to make sure that when you guys talk to the production companies and try to get them to come here to LA, remind them that we're probably the cheapest law enforcement that works with film companies, the most educated, the most experienced. I've got like 44 years doing this. So when we do the sets, we work with them, we've saved them time, which saves them money. They don't see the money, but they do realize that they get a lot more done here in LA because of the work we do. And if you guys can try to project that when you're trying to give the incentives for them to film here, remind them of the police and what they can do for the production.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. All right. Well, then, if there's no objection, members, we'll go ahead and approve the motion, and then we'll look forward to receiving the additional reports back from those departments that have not yet done so, and we'll do that at our next meeting at a date still to be determined. So thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number four.
Four is an extension of the film use fee waiver. We have offered the use of our properties for free since July of 2006.
Hold on, hold on one second. We have a tradition of reading the items.
Item number four is an Economic Workforce Development Department report in response to motion, Kokorian Blumenfield Fuentes, relative to film use fee waiver, ordinance number 181386, and status and recommendations of fee waiver extension.
Ms. Batar.
Okay. So we have offered the use of our properties for free since July of 2006, and then our first motion was for four years, and the second one was for four. This motion, this recommendation extends the film use fee waiver for an additional five years until June of 2019. So this applies to all the city departments except for the departments that are not dependent on the, I'm sorry, that do not depend on the general fund to support their, to sustain their operations. That would be the Convention Center, El Pueblo, Wreckin' Parks, the Zoo, and Public Works Warner Grand Theater. We are asking that Film LA to segregate the data collected from the other clients that they have that are non-city contracts so that we are able to look at these waived fees by departments and the type of film production that are separated by the property and the addresses. So for, for the past five years, we have waived $1.8 million, which is approximately $350,000 a year. This is strictly just the properties. This does not include any services that the departments provide, such as what was described earlier, say, by Wreckin' Parks where they do the walkthroughs to the locations, or the Fire Department when they do walkthroughs. These are strictly city properties use.
Now, the report indicated, as you just reminded us, that the fee waivers to date, almost 1.8, 1.8 million. That's real money. The city actually, you know, is incurring a forgone source of revenue there. But what's not included in the report, and I don't think it is reportable at this point because I don't think we have the data, but what isn't here is what the city has gained from those productions and what the return on investment of that $1.8 million is. We don't know the number of person-hours of employment that's produced, or the sales tax revenues that have been generated because filming was here rather than in Valencia or Santa Clarita or someplace. I don't know if I don't know if it's possible for us to ever really capture that, but I certainly hope that, and I suspect that we'll be approving the recommendation to extend the fee waiver for five years and apply it retroactively to the beginning of the fiscal year. But I'm wondering if there isn't some way through Film LA's data or otherwise that we can at least get kind of a superficial, top-level view of what those productions were for which we waived the fee so that we might get some general sense of return on investment.
We have not been able to capture this data. Unless the production companies tell us that they decided to utilize the city of LA instead of another property, unless we can capture that on a notation, on the permit, we would not know. We do have some numbers, but they are strictly guesstimates of who is utilizing our properties. Film LA has provided about 35% is utilized by commercials, 26% by student films, 15% by feature films, 13% for television drama, 7% for TV sitcoms, and 3% for television pilots, and about 2% for documentaries. We do know that our highest use, obviously, is commercials and student films, but again, we don't know how many of them would have gone out, or is it the fact that we waive our fees is why they're there?
We'll never be able to get clear causal relationship data, but I think what we can get is, when you take total production days, you take, you know, total job, jobs, you know, for those production days, you can get, I think we can get data like that so that at least, you may not be able to say that that 1.8 million directly resulted in, you know, 80% of that production, say, but it'll give us a sense of magnitude anyway. And I think that's important to continue to be able to tell the story to the public about why we are doing this, and the reason that we're doing it is to make sure that we're doing everything to incentivize keeping jobs here and creating additional new revenues here that we wouldn't get if that production is elsewhere. So at least if, again, don't need to take any action on that point today, but if you can kind of put your heads together and think of some way that we can have a top-level quantification of what we've gotten out of that, that would be really helpful.
Well, councilmember, as you probably know, that there have been several very well-documented reports that have been cited as to suggest exactly what you're saying, that for every dollar invested, there's anywhere between a dollar 13 and a dollar 26 that's put back into the economy. So I'd be happy to work with Eva and anybody else in the city to make sure that, A, those reports are available to you, but also to continue to report the success stories that are happening every day whenever production is here, how many jobs are put back into the workforce and how much investment is being made into the community.
Yeah, and those studies relate to the statewide incentive. It's kind of, it's a little bit apples and oranges, but for example, how many days were there, was there production in City Hall last year? You know, just to know that, because, you know, when you see how many people are working in that rotunda, it sends a pretty strong message to anybody who's coming through here to understand why we care about this issue so much. It's not, you know, to benefit the rich and the famous, it's to benefit that, you know, person who's hauling cable out there. And that's, that's, so anyway, I'd love to see if we can capture some of that to try to be able to tell that story a little better. Okay, so the recommendations on this matter are to extend for five years, retroactive to the beginning of fiscal year, and if you could just restate the recommendations on the other special foundations?
So to apply the fee waiver to all the city departments except for the five that are not part of the use fee because they're not generally funded, and then to instruct Film LA to segregate the city of LA data collection from other non-city clients, and to provide annual reports to the Economic Workforce Department so that we could provide you data by departments, type of productions, and the properties and the addresses.
Great. Mr. Wickham, something to add?
Yes, the current administrative code requests that the CAO do the reporting on this measure. Since those services have been transferred over to EWDD, it makes sense for EWDD to be denoted in the ordinance.
Yes, it does. Okay, so that, that will be, that's a helpful suggestion. Thank you. But before we act, members, we have a few cards on this matter, so I'd like to invite up Sarah Mitchell, Ezra Gale, and Ruben Gonzalez to come on up.
Mr. Chair. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I believe those might be general public comment.
No, those are all on item four.
Oh, they are all on item four? Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Sarah Mitchell. I'm with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. We represent many members of businesses in the film industry, especially below-the-line employees that rely on the entertainment industry remaining and growing again in the region. We all celebrated the expansion of the state film tax credit, but our work is not done. We need to ensure Angelenos can continue to work right here where they live and where their families go to school and live. Extending the fee rate waiver to 2019 sends a message that Los Angeles will not rely on just the presence of an expanded $300 million tax credit to maintain and attract filming, but that we want to make specific policies in our city to make filming easier and preferable in LA. In addition to this item, VICA has supported all of the items discussed today. Together, they allow the city to work for its own residents and to strengthen our key industry of the entertainment industry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I'm John Howland with the Central City Association. Ezra Gale had to go to the 10th floor to a central planning commission meeting. The hour is late, I'll be brief. CCA supports the recommendations we support, have the EWD recommendation, and the one thing I will say is that it is a $1.4 million in revenue that the city is foregoing, but if that filming goes elsewhere, that's $1.4 million the city is foregoing anyway.
I'm not usually as brief as Mr. Howland. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
Take your time.
My name is Ruben Gonzalez. I'm here on behalf of the LA Area Chamber of Commerce, and of course, I'm here to speak in favor of continuing the fee waiver, extending it for the five years. The state's action with the leadership of the chair and Councilman O'Farrell on this committee, as well as others, really makes a huge difference in bringing production back to California. Now it's time to make sure that a good chunk of that production comes to the city of Los Angeles, and this is us doing our part. And you're right, Mr. Chairman, it is difficult to quantify the exact impacts. It's not easy, but the reality is that every production that we have in Los Angeles is in and of itself a small local economy. Every production, from the smallest commercial to a blockbuster movie, not only, not only does it direct benefit to the workers below the line, above the line, and those folks who are spending money in our community and often live in our community, but beyond that you have, you know, the caterers, the dry cleaners, the attorneys, the financial experts, so on and so forth. It's almost like its own little village or its own little town economy right there in production. And so what we're doing is we're creating those little economies, and each of them is an engine for our larger economy. And so we'd like to thank the committee for their good work and thank the staff for their good work. I thank Film LA and Art Yunus for his good work, and let's move forward on this waiver. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, members, anything further? All right, then, well, the recommendation would be to approve the EWDD recommendations. Number two, to request the city attorney prepare and present an ordinance to extend the filming use fee waiver retroactive to any fees that may have been assessed starting July 1, 2014. And three, to include in the ordinance an amendment to the administrative code to reflect that the Economic and Workforce Development Department should provide a report six months prior to the sunset of June 30, 2019, replacing the CAO. And if there's no objection, that will be the action of the committee. So thank you all very much. Thank you for coming in unexpectedly and providing your input. We have two general public comment cards before we adjourn. Arnold Peter, followed by Joe Wallenstein. Mr. Peter, welcome.
Chairman, fellow councilmembers, I'm an entertainment attorney and I represent the local film schools, specifically USC, UCLA, LMU, and AFI. For the past few years, I've been working with the film schools in fulfilling their obligations under the Los Angeles Film Ordinance. Film schools believe that not only are they obligated to fully comply with the terms of the LA Film Ordinance, but it's also essential to teach their students the requirements of complying because their future jobs depend on that level of knowledge and that level of expertise. I believe this is the first time that the film schools have addressed this particular committee, but the common refrain you will hear from the film schools is that because there are not a commercial studio or a network, that hyper-technical enforcement of the LA Film Ordinance creates issues and sometimes very detrimental issues for the film schools and student films and student filmmakers. About a year ago, we began to encounter some obstacles in terms of complying and implementing the obligations under the Film Ordinance. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to echo your endorsement of the Office of the Films are with Mr. De Laal's help. We were able to get before the right people, and thankfully, we encountered city staff, Film LA staff, that was very responsive to our needs and to our concerns, and we began to address those concerns, and I believe we satisfied many of them. With me is Joe Wallenstein, who's the head of physical production at USC, who would like to present you with just a summary of some of the resolutions we've reached and some requests for some further oversight and support from the city council.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Wallenstein.
Thank you.
Welcome and fight on.
My name is Joe Wallenstein. I am the director of physical production at the USC School of Cinematic Arts. Arnold stole most of what I was going to say, so this will be mercifully brief. We're not a commercial entity. We work on a different model. We don't have accounting departments to whom we can turn for financial assistance. We are a semester-based program. If a student loses a location, it may very well compromise their ability to fulfill their requirements to go to the next semester. And the third component is we are a very small footprint in comparison to the professional industry. With the help of Rajiv and Film LA and Anna, we have come up with some very good, workable, short-term solutions, the first of which is the city, Film LA, and the LAPD very graciously extended to us the ability, when a show has six students or less, requiring no city permits and no prop weapons, that the kids be allowed to file a permit compliance letter, which serves the purpose of putting them in the process of getting permits, but saves them the obligation of going to Film LA for making phone calls. A lot of our kids come from overseas, and even navigating our very culture is problematic for some of them. The second thing, which is huge for us, and the other day when Eva said this to me, I practically jumped out of my skin, that there are going to be other locations that we can have on behalf of the city. That is huge for us. Want to applaud all of you because as a lifelong filmmaker, I could not be happier that film is going to come back to LA. Film on.
Thank you very, what a great way to conclude this meeting. And thank you both for your comments. The facilitation of student filming has been something that my office has been working on for a while, and I appreciate your acknowledging Anna's work on this. And it's important because, for the reason that you stated, which is, these are our future filmmakers. Let's teach them to be good filmmaking citizens right from the beginning, and to be compliant, and to get permits, and to do those sorts of things. So I think starting right from the beginning is important, and that'll be something that we'll continue to work with you to help develop.
I'll take 20 seconds of your valuable time because I spoke with Eva last week, and I've heard several people talk about the rollover effect of filming here and what you lose and what you gain. I would call attention to a study by the Massachusetts Film Commission, which said that every dollar that rumbles through the system rolls over seven times before it's removed.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. For everyone who's come down and participated today and throughout the meetings of this ad hoc committee, I want to thank you all very much for coming down. If you haven't yet done so, please sign in on our sign-in sheet so that we can make sure to keep you apprised of our next meeting. Thank you all very much. Members, if there's nothing further, we are adjourned.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chair.